Relative to the agenda, and that is what you don't see on the agenda, is the application for the site plan review for the hotel. Brian, would you care to comment on that?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. We have had some contact going into the end of 2013 with the project architect. As you'll recall, they obtained special use approval recommendation from the Planning Commission, and then that went forth to the Township Board, and they did receive conditional special land use approval. However, they have not since submitted a new site plan. They need to submit a final site plan addressing all of the items noted through the review process. I left a voicemail with the project architect late last week trying to get an update for this evening's meeting, and I have not yet heard anything back. So unfortunately, I don't have anything in the way of a status report, but certainly we'll keep you apprised if and when we do hear back from the petitioner.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. So on that note, are there any additions and/or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Motion from Ann, support. Support from Brian. Call a question on a favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Agenda stands. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 2nd, 2013. That was our last meeting. Any comments on those minutes? Eric?
No.
Brian?
No.
Jim?
Skip me.
Yeah, good to see you down there.
No doubt.
Okay. Ann?
I already seen them. I approved them before they were presented.
Oh, okay. Jake?
None.
Mickey?
None.
Oh, Steve's here. Hi, Steve.
Hello.
Any comments on the minutes?
No.
Okay. Entertainer motion to approve as submitted.
It's moved.
Motion from Jay, support from Ann. Call a question on a favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Once again, Lori and Ann do a nice job.
Send them to me, and I check them over.
Hey, it works. Okay, next item is public comment, an opportunity for citizens to speak with the commission about any item not on the agenda. Seeing no hands, I'll move on to the first item of business, which is a sketch plan review for increase in lot coverage ratio. The applicant is Mr. Larry Ferguson, 23669 of Cloverdale Court. The legal description is Lot 15 of West Shore Estates subdivision. The common description, Cloverdale Court is located off of Country Club Lane, which intersects to Ferry Road. And Cloverdale Lane is a, or Court, I should say, the house is basically backing into the woods. The proposal is to add an enclosed 775 square foot pool house, basically, to the rear of the structure. The proposed ground floor area after completion of this will be 5,705 feet. The lot size is about 23,000 square feet, so when you calculate the lot coverage ratio, it turns out to be 24.7 percent with the proposal. This percentage exceeds the 20 percent ratio, which is allowed in the zoning ordinance. So therefore, since it's over that 20 percent, it has to come to the Planning Commission for a review tonight. Just for general background, lot coverage ratio was put into the ordinance as a way of dealing with what were termed Bigfoot houses, basically where a house is so large that it is out of character with the houses around it. And so the Planning Commission years ago put this standard in, and we've been judging against that ever since. The zoning on this is R1D, single-family residential. The ordinances that pertain are Article III, single-family residential, and specifically Section 3.4E, which is a residential design standards section where lot coverage ratio is defined and for use. Also, it's site plan review, Article 21, specifically sketch plan standards that we will judge tonight. The process under Article 21 is, in fact, a single step. It's reviewed by the Planning Commission and a decision. And I would expect that the Planning Commission won't vote on this tonight. Just a little further background on this application. This application has also already been to ZBA. The application required a rear yard setback variance. This occurred last week, and the Zoning Board of Appeals approved it. However, I was informed by Brian that there were changes that the Zoning Board of Appeals required of the application. Those changes are not in the package of materials that you have tonight. So Brian's going to have to describe for us what it is that changed as a result of the Zoning Board of Appeals' action. So what you've got are basically the basics, and then Brian will tell us what further has changed. So on that note, I'll stop. I'd like to hear first from Brian.
Just to step up to the podium, Mr. Chair. I did do a brief presentation just to run through some of what you just said, and then hopefully a little bit more, and answer some of the questions. So, yeah, the request before you this evening is for an increase in the allowable lot coverage ratio. The site, as you've already noted, I've turned the aerial on its side here such that west is up. So this is our subject site right here. It is on the south side of the Cloverdale Court cul-de-sac, south of Country Club Lane, which is then south of Ferry Road, which would be off the screen, out to the right-hand side. Site and surrounding properties within the neighborhood are all zoned R1D. The undeveloped property, you can see the wooded property to the south, is actually within the R1B designation. So there is a zoning district line that splits along the rear of the property. And again, the pertinent sections before you this evening in terms of the ordinance are Article III and Article 21, as the chairman noted, and of specific note, 3.4E, residential design standards, which again, of course, the chairman already noted that as well. As mentioned, the ZBA did hear the variance case last week at their meeting, and they did ultimately grant the variance that was sought when the project was, you know what? I'm going to slow down because I've got another slide here. Nonetheless, the rear yard setback variance was approved. What I want to do is take a step back and just walk through the ordinance provisions. We have not had one of these requests in some time, so I want to make sure everybody's familiar with the terminology and the process. So within your residential design standards, in 3.4E, we have paragraph eight, which lays out a number of regulations pertaining to sizes of homes. The very first section of this paragraph dictates the maximum floor area ratio for a new residence or a residential addition. The floor area ratio is essentially a calculation of the usable floor area of the residence divided by the lot area. So it would not include things like basements, would not include things like garages attached or detached. Those do not constitute usable floor area. The next item relates to the lot coverage ratio. Now, lot coverage ratio takes into account essentially the footprint of the principal building as well as any accessory buildings. So for instance, on a ranch house with an attached garage, the whole footprint is your lot coverage. On a two-story house with an attached garage, only the first floor and the garage count. It's literally just the impervious surface over the lot. So it's, instead of being usable, it's actual building square footage divided by the size of the lot area. Then where this one gets fun is every home or every property has its own unique calculation in terms of what ratio can be provided. And that's determined by the character of the surrounding area. So in essence, we look at, in most cases, we look at the 10 nearest developed dwellings, and we run lot coverage and floor area calculations for those properties. We determine an average, and then we take 150 percent of that average, and that becomes the new maximum. The caveat to that is that if those maximums are greater than 22 percent for floor area, 20 percent for lot coverage, then 22 and 20 essentially become the maximums. In essence, you can never go over those thresholds. So if a neighborhood average turned out to be 22 percent lot coverage ratio, it would actually fall back to 20 as the conventional maximum. What we ended up doing as a result of that, to make sure we still had a process to deal with this, was we wrote in Planning Commission ability to approve anything within 5 percent above the maximum. And that's really why we're here this evening. What we have is a request to go over the maximum lot coverage, which in this case is 20 percent. They want to go over, but they are within the 5 percent that is allowed for your review and consideration. And then here's a look at the site plan. This is, actually, this is the current plan. The chairman had mentioned there were some changes as a result of the ZBA meeting. And I was under the impression that some of the new plans were going to be delivered to the commissioners and/or on the dais this evening. So if you did not get those, then I apologize. But ultimately, the changes are not overly significant, and I'm happy to go through them this evening. The primary change relates to the rear yard setback encroachment. As you can see here, the darker gray area is the proposed addition, and then the white outlined, that's the existing residence. After the discussion at ZBA last week, what ended up happening was originally, there was a 28-foot setback, which was, in essence, a 12-foot setback encroachment. That was shaved down by 11 inches. So it wasn't, while not necessarily a substantial amount, it was an improvement in the eyes of the ZBA, and that's something that we always try to do. Now, a few of you have been on ZBA before. One of the things we try to do is to minimize or mitigate the extent of the variance being sought. So in this case, the project architect, the property owner, and the ZBA worked together to find a way to minimize the variance, to at least reduce it by a little bit more. So the plan on the screen reflects a 28-foot, 11-inch setback, in essence, an 11-foot, 1-inch variance down from the 12-foot variance. The other change is actually just a correction. It did not come about from ZBA, but thankfully is something that we caught, because I think it does affect your process and your decision-making this evening. And that was originally, this came in as a 24.7 percent lot coverage ratio. We went back and checked township records, and we've recalculated those numbers. And in fact, what we're dealing with now is actually a 22.1 percent lot coverage ratio. So the extent above the 20 percent maximum has been reduced by more than half in this case. So it's actually a pretty sizable change. And really, all that was is a calculation error. There were some old plans that were used in an attempt to try to calculate what the ground floor area was. Those numbers are reflected in our review letter. However, I did confirm, both with the project architect as well as the Township Assessors' Office, that in fact, those numbers were a little bit off, and I do have the new numbers in front of me. So ultimately, what you're looking at tonight, instead of that original 24.7 or 4.7 percent increase, is actually only a 2.1 percent increase above the maximum. Next slide. This is a view, and again, this was part of the new information submitted, so I apologize that you did not get that. So this is, in essence, a view of what the proposed addition would look like, if you can follow this. This would be the new addition. And for reference purposes, if you can kind of follow this porch area, and you can see in the 3D model, you can see this triangular-shaped projection right here. That is right there. So to give you some perspective, there's the projection, covered porch, and then immediately west of that area, this is the proposed addition. I'd be happy to go back to that at any point if anybody wants to see that. So I mentioned earlier that Section 3.4E does give Planning Commission the ability to grant an increase in floor area or lot coverage by up to 5 percent. In this case, we're dealing only with lot coverage. Items A, B, and C on the screen are the review standards that you are to apply in making your determination as to whether or not you should allow the proposed increase. Item A is essentially that the proposed building will be similar and compatible with the character of the area. This takes into account architectural styles, building details, building materials, roof pitch, et cetera. Would the proposed building be out of character if you were to allow this increase? In a neighborhood of, you know, small 1,200-square-foot pitch roof ranches, somebody wants to build a two-story colonial with a flat roof that's, you know, twice as big as any other home in the neighborhood. General character types of conditions. The second item relates to compliance with the dimensional standards of the ordinance, in this case referred to as area and bulk regulations. When area and bulk standards are not met, the ordinance dictates that both ZBA and Planning Commission shall determine, or basically you have to deem, that the variance sought is the least amount of variance necessary. In other words, that the variance request, if there is one, as there was in this case, is reasonable. That is inherently part of the ZBA's consideration under the substantial justice test. It is something that's put forth for your consideration this evening as well, because they did need that setback variance. In essence, you would have to make the finding that the one variance for 11 feet is reasonable given conditions of the property, character of the neighborhood. And then the last item is essentially that ultimately the project would not be harmful to surrounding properties. Is it of such mass or height or such placement on the lot that it would block light and air, that it would somehow disrupt the neighbor's enjoyment of their property? Those types of considerations. So last slide, just an overview of my letter with some updated numbers. Petition is before you for a 22.1 percent lot coverage ratio. Does exceed the 20 percent maximum, however, is also within the 5 percent allowable for your consideration. And again, as noted, that is down from originally what was thought to be 24.7. As a result of the project, if approved, it would be the second highest lot coverage ratio when you compare it to the 10 surrounding properties, or the 10 nearest properties that were used to calculate the average. And in fact, it would be the largest in terms of actual square footage. So the ground floor area square footage would be the most of the 10. The actual ratio, when you take into account the size of the lot, would be the second most out of the 10 for the sake of comparison. The ZBA did grant an 11-foot, 1-inch setback variance from the rear yard requirement, which is 40 feet in this case. However, aside from the setback and aside from the need for the LCR increase, all other standards are met. Height is good, side setbacks are good, floor area ratio is good. There are no other dimensional issues with this particular project. And then the closing point, which really ties back to the nature of the site and the surroundings. Given that the site does back up to a large wooded undeveloped area, we're basically of the opinion that there's not going to be a harmful effect upon neighboring properties, particularly to the rear. This is an area that, while it is platted and while it could be developed, and quite frankly, maybe it will be developed, that development is not going to occur anytime in the near future. You need to have access to roads and utilities in order to build single-family residences in the township. And as I think you can, you're aware of the site, and you can see just a little bit by this excerpt of the aerial photo, there's nothing remotely close to this property to the south. The one closing point I do have is, given the size of the proposed residence, and given that there was consideration for variance into the rear yard, I did put forth a suggestion, at least as a discussion point, more so than a formal recommendation, but there may be some value in the commission incorporating a condition of some additional side yard plantings, just to help beef up the landscaping and make sure we're protecting the parcels to the sides, which in this case really would be the only ones affected. And at this point in time, only one of which is developed. So the, again, mind you, this is rotated, but the property to the east is developed, the property to the west is not currently developed. Just a point, again, some discussion, some consideration. If you felt that it was needed, you certainly would be within your rights to include that as a condition, if you wanted to see some side yard plantings to help buffer and mitigate the size of the residence. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Excellent summary. Okay, let's hear from the applicant. Mr. Ferguson, would you please come to the podium and introduce yourself? We'd like to hear what additional thoughts you might have relative to what you've heard.
Did you go through the slides?
Yeah. Okay.
Good evening. My name's Larry Ferguson, 23669 Cloverdale Court.
Welcome.
Thank you. And this is my architect, Rick Bowle, and I'm going to let Mr. Bowle explain a lot of this to you, but I'd like to hear your moral support.
And, Mr. Bowle, your address?
I'm Mr. Bowle. 297-25 Bayview.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'm not real sure what to add. Brian did an excellent job of going through all the items that are involved with this. If you don't have the drawings in front of you, I think it might be worthwhile to take a look a little bit more in detail at the project plan. I don't know if we can get this on the overhead or not.
I think so. Brian can help you with that in just a moment.
This is some of the repeat of the stuff that Brian is showing, but...
Here we go.
There we go. I think what's beneficial to this is it offers a side-by-side comparison of the, let's see if I can get this, of the existing and what's proposed. And I bring these two up just as a comparison of, one of the design criterias that you have to review tonight is what the character of the structure looks like, and whether the materials that we're using and the style of architecture and so on and so forth balance with the neighborhood and the existing house. And we're actually using the same brick. We've got similar roof pitches, similar detailing. So when this is done, the addition is going to look like it's part of the house. And just by way of information, it's, you have got the outline of the footprint of the building, but this is basically what the inside of it is going to look like.
Hmm.
Okay, so if I can go back to the slides, Brian, let me see where I can... Do you have the chart of the surrounding property areas?
I do not.
Okay. The, Brian alluded to the fact that there are 10, one of the criteria in the ordinance is you take a look at the 10 adjoining property or in the area to take a look at the lot coverage ratios. And he mentioned that there is actually one house that's in this particular subdivision that's in that set of 10 houses that has actually got a larger lot coverage ratio than this house does. And I think that's 23 and some percent, and we're at 22...
Point one.
Point one. So this wouldn't be the largest house, but it is above the average of the balance of the houses, and it's over the 20 percent. One of the other design criteria that is in the ordinance is how we impact the neighbors and whether there is any impact on the neighbors. And when we were at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, we submitted a letter that had signatures of four adjacent neighbors that basically endorsed this project. So if you can take their judgment of the impact, or at least their perception of the impact, then they haven't got any objections. And I believe it was the neighbor, help me out, Larry, on the location of those folks. We don't have a copy of the letter, but it is...
That's okay. We take your word for it.
All right.
It's just fine. Doesn't matter exactly where.
All right. Okay.
Did you, fellas, give thought to Brian's comment about landscaping and what that might mean, side lot landscaping?
We really haven't talked about it yet.
Well, I personally, I've already, on the east side of my home, I already have landscaping there that would already cover it. So that's already in place. But to the west side, that would have to be redone, and that will be redone. Absolutely. And we've already discussed it, and I already have a landscaper that we've even talked to about how we could do something, because I'd like to, both east and west, to look similar in style. So as you come up my driveway, I have a good-sized planting area that's already there that extends, and on the backside of the covered patio porch area. So it is pretty heavily landscaped.
I was there, and I saw it. And I, the point I wanted to make here was that the picture that you had, the aerial view is old. Okay? It doesn't represent the landscaping, which is in fact there now.
And you take the, and you take the look at the one in the winter, you can't even see the bushes, because the deer have pretty much ate a lot of them, so...
I noticed a lot of tracks, too.
Yes, yes. But they will come back.
Okay. All right. Very good. So at this point, why don't you just kind of sit tight, and we'll see if there are any questions that commissioners have for you, and we'll bring it back here. Since there's nobody in the audience, I'll turn to Jay. Your thoughts and questions?
Yeah, we don't need to know where all the letters were from, but I guess I'd be most concerned about the neighbor directly to the east. Is that one of the people that...
Yes. I mean, Greg Barton lives to, actually, Greg Barton lives to my east.
Okay.
And I got his and Angela's signatures.
Okay.
And then... I know it's a pretty wide-open area right now, and so we obviously concern ourselves most with, you know, the people who are there now, but we also have to concern ourselves with who will be there next, and as well as that property behind. And, you know, I think Brian's probably right, that while in theory that could be developed and may at some point be developed, and, you know, our decisions are going to impact people that will develop it, you know, decades from now probably, but we do have to consider those things. But having said that, I, I'm pretty impressed with the proposal and the layout of everything, and I've also seen the landscaping, and I think, you know, that requirement, you know, to the extent you're willing to stipulate in there that you'll do something similar on the other side, I think that'd be great, but I think we know you'll probably do that. So I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Jay. Mickey?
Is it on? If I understand correctly, the zoning board approved the rear setback?
Correct.
Okay. So we're really only looking at the lot coverage?
Only lot coverage.
Okay. No, right now, I'm not concerned with the 22.1, so no further questions?
Okay. Thank you. Steve?
Well, nicely done, and good evening. I don't think I'm here to judge that I don't see a slide in the pool pitcher, but it is nicely done. I am happy to see that your family will be able to enjoy this. I think you positioned it well with the house, you know, in regards to the coverage. I think it fits in well with the surrounding homes, I think, with your home. And that picture you showed, it looks great, the before and after, and I definitely support what I see so far. Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Ann?
Having been at the Zoning Board of Appeals and what they presented tonight, I have no additional questions.
Okay. Thank you. Brian?
I want to echo the comments of my fellow commissioners that, you know, based on the application I see here, personally, I don't see any problems with it. But I do have, you know, a couple more questions that I might ask of you, but I'm also asking our fellow commissioners as well as Mr. Burton about. So I was wondering, that this application did go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And generally, with the zoning board, when you're seeking a variance, there's supposed to be something unique to that specific site that requires the variance. For example, if, you know, there might be a giant boulder in someone's yard, and that might preclude them from putting the actual development and, you know, centering, so they might actually have some, you know, rear side setback concerns. In this case, what was the unique concern, why the commission went to the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Mr. Chair, I was not at the meeting. I don't know what the findings were.
And this is, you know, not in any regards to be negative on your specific application. It's just more so, from my understanding, because we want to make sure that our zoning regulations are, you know, fit, you know, most applications that are coming through here. If we're having quite a few applications come through where the applicant needs to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals, something might be wrong with our ordinance, and that's the reason why I'm asking that question. So I don't want you to think that that's a negative on your guys' part.
No, it was the design, it was the road, and it was the property. You want to...
Yeah, we can go through the...
There's not, we don't need to go back over to ZBA.
Okay.
Okay.
No, but they...
But Ann can summarize the result, since she is our representative.
Actually, they gave your yard setback variance of 11.1 foot, because they were needed 40 feet overall. So they just give them a variation of 11.1 foot. So that's what they needed to do, is to cover the 40-foot... Was talking about the 40-foot setback.
But it was unique to that specific site because of the road alignment?
Yeah, right.
Okay, that's good enough for me, thank you. And my second question that I was asking myself, as well as our fellow commissioners here, is, you know, what is the actual purpose of our LCR and FAR? You know, what does that accomplish versus the other, you know, standards that we have here where we could be subjective or be, you know, relying on our other dimensional criteria?
Well, in a nutshell, it's, again, as I mentioned before, to have some ability to control the amount of building that goes on in a set piece of property, and to control the size of the structure on that property. It's a defense mechanism against buildings which are out of character because of size. They're called Bigfoot houses, is what they're called. And when they come into a neighborhood and you have a series of single-family, nice, nice-sized homes, and literally, a house comes in and takes up every applicable foot of buildable space, it's out of character with the neighborhood, and we put that in years ago to defend Groseal against that. That's why it's in.
See, I mean, I would think that there might be other standards that you'd be looking at besides...
No.
...the size of the neighborhood. For example, stormwater runoff.
We have... We looked at this, we took the best that was available around the state to protect Groseal, and that's what we did. That's what the ordinance is, and it works. Additional questions? Comments? Other things that you wanted to share? Jim?
Quick question for Brian. Did we send out any... Were we required to send out any letters ourselves for Rosio?
Thanks, I kind of overlooked that point. I wanted to hit that after Mr. Bowle spoke earlier, but as part of the process, the ten properties used to calculate the neighborhood average are all sent notices of the commission hearing, and as they noted earlier, four of those provided some level of support in written documentation at the ZBA meeting last week. Unfortunately, with Lori being out, I could not find the file, and I wasn't able to find the actual document, but it was submitted as part of the record with the ZBA case.
Okay, good. Thank you. No real questions, great presentation. All of the information we received at my house, I was able to easily get through the package. The thing I noticed about this lot in particular, these are all custom homes in the neighborhood, so it's not like one house is gonna jump out more than the others. It seems like they're all custom, very unique to the area. I don't see any problems with this, it's in the back, it's wooded lot like we talked about, so no further questions, great job, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Eric?
Yeah, no real questions, just a little more background, and the Bigfoot concept that was put in around 10 or 15 years ago was primarily around infill development. While this is kind of infill, this is really more almost brand-new development, because it's a brand-new subdivision. So it was really to protect the properties of existing neighborhoods. In this case, I don't think it really applies to this neighborhood, since this is very much in character with the new neighbor, you know, with that particular neighborhood and standings, and certainly, you know, 2 percent variance is fine. When we wrote the ordinance, we gave the planning commission up to a 5 percent variance, and so far, I think this is the third case we've seen, and none of them have been over 5 percent. So I'm very happy with the proposal as presented.
Thank you, Eric. I'll second what the committee has said. This... The three criteria that Brian laid out have been met with this proposal. This is just fine for this area. Those are my comments. They are in motion, please regarding this application.
Move to approve the application?
Motion from Eric, support. Support from Brian. Call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to maybe rebuilding this summer.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
For planning commission swim party.
There you go. Okay, let's move on. Under Chair's report, we have some general discussion items. First, zoning ordinance amendments. Brian, would you talk to that issue, please?
Absolutely, thanks, Mr. Chair. What I wanted to just sort of get the wheels in motion tonight was, given this is our first meeting of the calendar year, we have a long ways to go before the end, obviously, but I wanted to sort of start to plant the seed for some of our 2014 planning and zoning tasks. There are a few things, some of which are carryovers, some of which are new. So the first item that I put forth was the idea of some potential ordinance amendments. As you'll all recall, we do have a running tab of potential amendments, as well as a subcommittee who meets not in a while. I don't wanna say infrequently, but we have not had a meeting in a while due to a number of reasons, and I might suggest we try to get that group back and going again, so that we take a look at our priority items from last year and the year before, and bring that back to the commission. And the real... My... I don't wanna call it a concern, that's too strong of a word. The deeper rationale behind that particular item, and it didn't make the agenda, but there have been some recent changes to the planning and zoning enabling statutes, as well as some court decisions that may likely have some effect on our ordinances. And I really think we wanna make sure we stay on top of those items in particular, as well as some others. If there are some other ordinance amendments, we can piggyback to clean up the ordinance here and there. Those are always important. But first and foremost, I wanna make sure we keep our ordinance lawful, and make sure that we don't have something in there that is contrary to current statute or any recent court decision. So that would be kind of my first item, and I think if we can just find a time, we'll try to get the subcommittee together in, you know, the next month or two, and we can come back with sort of a status report for the commission at the next meeting.
Okay, that would be Jim and Jay. Okay, maybe we can have a short session with Brian after this meeting, and look to calendars and see what works. Okay, let's... What's next? Training seminar?
Next item, yes, simply, you know, every year, we try to do something, whether it's a planning and zoning topic, or whether it's just kind of a walkthrough of commissioner roles responsibilities, or as specific as navigating your own zoning ordinance. We typically have done about one of these a year. We may have missed out on last year with some of the project reviews that we had going, particularly in the latter part of the year, but that's always something, obviously, for consideration. So certainly, if there are any topics or anything of interest of the commissioners, then we'd be more than happy to put a presentation together for one of the potentially lighter agendas, probably sometime in the summertime, just to go over things. Again, whether you wanna rehash planning commissioner training, whether you wanna rehash your own zoning ordinance, or whether it's something new and/or different, certainly we'll be happy to do so.
Might I suggest that if you have thoughts for what you might like to have training on, communicate those with me or with Lori, and we'll get them to Brian. But maybe we could go the other direction as well. Brian, maybe you could come up with two or three suggestions?
Sure.
And propose them out there, and I'll... And ask Lori to send an email out, and ask commissioners what, you know... Put on any that come in from commissioners, but then put on yours as well, and then they can select which one it is they want to cover, and we'll add it as an agenda item at a meeting this summer.
Absolutely. It's one of those things where you just never know. When we get a consistent group over a period of time, we probably don't need to rehash navigating the ordinance. We may not need to rehash basic planning commissioner roles and responsibilities, but when we get some new members and some turnover, those things start to become important again, and/or refreshers for the rest of the group. So those are the obvious ones, but certainly there are more elements that we could discuss.
Very good. Good thought. And the last item, the master plan?
Yeah, the last item, I gotta be honest, I thought we were still within our five years. I was shocked to see that five years has passed since the last time we talked about it.
Really?
I think I've got a few more gray hairs, because I cannot believe it's been that long. But I do... I'm gonna double-check my file again, but I am almost certain that we are due for another five-year review, and then, which essentially comes with a determination as to whether or not the plan is up to date and current, or whether or not changes may be warranted.
So if we have this as an agenda item at the next meeting, how would you... Would you review the master plan for the group, basically? How would that be done?
Typically, what I like to do is there... I have a list of bullet points of some considerations, and I probably would like to do a brief presentation to the full commission, so we can talk about some of these ideas and really get a feel for your thoughts on the plan. Ultimately, that does take a little bit of homework on your parts to go back through and re-review the plan. You don't have to read it page by page, but at least give some of the key sections a read-over again. You probably haven't looked at it in a while. I'm not calling anybody out, as I'm tearing at Jim, but... I'm just kidding. I couldn't resist, so...
That was really good. I know.
It's just one of those things where it's... That would probably be, rather than me trying to tell you that your plan is current and up to date, I would like to maybe help guide you through the process, so that as a group, we can make the determination that it is current and up to date.
Okay, so we could then make this an agenda topic?
Sure.
You make the presentation?
Sure.
You kind of lead the questions?
Absolutely.
And the commission, having looked at the master plan, can make some judgments?
And we can do this over the course of multiple meetings as well.
Okay.
We don't have to come to a conclusion in one night.
The fact that we're past five years is not... We haven't fallen off a cliff, is what you're telling us?
There's, you know, as we have a saying in our office sometimes, there aren't any real planning and zoning police out there that are gonna come after us if we're a touch outside of our five years. There's really no repercussions. The issues... Really, the reason the statute was written that way was to get people moving who hadn't looked at their plans in 20 or 30 years. And we've been consistent in looking at your plan every few years, as well as looking at what's been implemented. I think we've stayed pretty much on top of it, so I don't see anything significant that's out there that we need to really rush this, but I do think it is a process. I do wanna make sure that we go through the process, so we are following the statute, and ultimately, we'll come to a determination as to what to do next, if anything.
Okay, well, if I could suggest, then, we'll propose ways to divide this thing up. We'll take it a few bites at a time, get through it in 2014, and be good to go.
Absolutely.
That way, the homework on Jim won't be too high either, if we take small pieces.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that maybe at the end of the process, do a public hearing on it. Brian will notice that a few times, is it on the agenda item, and maybe have a brief public hearing on it before the final adaptation.
Brian?
Absolutely, yeah. I have a community, we just wrapped this up first of this year, and we did the same thing. Determination was made, no changes were warranted. They passed a resolution stating that the plan was current, up to date, but we did post and conduct a hearing in case there were some residents that wanted to chime in.
That's a good suggestion. Okay. Anybody have any questions about these three topics? The zoning ordinance amendments, the training seminar, and the master plan, as Brian has laid them out? Any questions or comments?
Can I just comment on one thing?
Yes.
When we were talking about training this summer, and I don't know if you do this, but is there any way to maybe tie it into best practices? Like, you had talked about the Bigfoot plan, that you had looked around the state of Michigan to come up with what the best was out there. So when we do training, I mean, is it possible to maybe look at best practices across the state of Michigan, and somehow possibly tie that into the review of the master plan?
We'll see what we can do.
Is that too much to ask?
No, it's not too much to ask.
Kind of a big thing to do, but...
It might be too much for me to pull off, but it's not too much to ask.
I got confidence in you.
Thank you, Mickey. Steve, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just real quick before we close, two quick questions to refresh my memory. The discussion we had a while ago for the boat club over on West River, I couldn't remember if that's a closed deal, we're done with that at this level. I just couldn't remember if we had the file say on that one. And then also, does this committee have anything to do with abandoned buildings here on Groseal?
Mr. Borden?
Question one, process is done, project was approved. Question two, not generally, but if there are some concerns, some... Something you're seeing in the community, as with anything else, I would encourage you to reach out to Lori and/or Tony, and make them aware of what you're seeing out there. If it's an enforcement issue, I guess what I'm suggesting, I don't want to get specifics.
What is your specific concern? Is there a...
No, no specific, just came in my mind.
Oh, okay.
Nothing with Jim's house.
Well, I'm glad there's no specific concern.
No.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments about these three items?
I think that the review of the master plan, the five-year review, I think that's great that we should be doing that. There's been a lot of changes, at least in my opinion. Basically, you know, we have population and employment shift within the region, as well as within the Midwest. We've got, you know, our declining... Our, as well... Our declining of a... Our deindustrialization, as well as more mechanization, meaning less jobs, which significantly impacts the Downriver community in Southern Wayne County. There's been a significant change in housing preferences, especially between the different demographics with young couples, as well as folks that are aging, so they're looking for more housing choices. I know that myself, as well as Supervisor Loftus and Trustee Smith, went to a Downriver summit, and they're specifically talking about that, and how there is a glut of basically, you know, single-family detached homes, and not enough actually, you know, condos, not enough, you know, different housing choices and living arrangements, so that way, people can age in place. Now, how do we make sure that people that grow up here, wanna stay here? How do we, you know, age... Once people get to a certain age, that they can continue to be a part of our community? You know, vehicle miles traveled are down, and I know that's a kind of a weird term there, but it basically means that people are driving less. So as I mentioned before about employment shifting within the region, if people are driving less, that means that people might be not considering, you know, moving to Groseal instead of other places like Canton and Plymouth. And basically, you know, with our... The region's future growth, basically, we've been looking at low-to-no-growth scenarios. So I think a lot has changed since the last time we had a master plan update, and we should be looking at, you know, how does our housing stock, as well as our land use decisions, how does that affect our community, from the school district to, you know, what's happening and who is actually be living here in the future? So, thank you.
I think that the last... We used the census from 2000, I think was the last time, you know, where the information came out, about 2003 or something like that, and that's what we, I think, rolled into the plan. Okay, very good. Other comments?
Well, just like to add that there's also the complete street ordinances and the complete street legislation that you may wanna consider adding as well.
Okay.
I do have one more comment.
Sure.
I was wondering if we might be able to reach out to other commissions, based on when we're doing this master plan update, because, you know, we do have the Recreation Department, we've got open space, and looking at how the open space relates to recreation, to our planning, our Downtown Development Authority, as well as the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, we've been doing, you know, some work on promoting active communities, and that goes into the planning realm as well, so it might be nice to, you know, get everybody together and be, quote, Wally Poseack is, you know, trumpeting the same tune, basically. So just to make sure that all of our commissions are on board, and we make this more of a whole township effort, instead of just a single commission's effort.
If I might suggest on this, since we'll be splitting it up, you know, we won't do all at one time, it's too big. We'll do a little... A piece at a time, and then what we can do is see, okay, a given piece, who might that involve that we could ask? You know, so not everybody would come to every meeting necessarily, but if we, you know, we're public hearing it, and we focus on one area, you know, we could pull in the interest, you know, on that. Brian, I'll kind of look to you to, you know, as... When you make a proposal as to how this gets split up, then we can take a look and see how those other groups that Brian was discussing might or might not be impacted, and then make sure that there's been some contact there. Can we do that?
I believe we can.
Good.
I'd love you... I'd love you, just one clarification point. The idea of the initial exercise is to determine whether or not we're going to update the plan. I don't want to present it as though we are updating the plan because I think we need to get past that first hurdle before we make that decision. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Yeah, that is, that is a good point. The last update we did was cost somewhere in the vicinity of $25,000 and was like a, gosh, at least a year's exercise for those of you who have been around. I mean, it was, it was pretty intense.
Yeah. An actual plan update, obviously there will be time and budget commitments behind that, but we'll, again, the initial idea is to go through the exercise, determine whether or not an update is warranted. If it is not warranted, then we're done. If it is warranted, then we need to sort of move into that next realm. I think what I'll do, Mr. Chair, if it's okay, is maybe work with Trustee Ranka and speak with Dale as well, because I know they're going through budgeting right now.
Budgeting downstairs as we speak.
Yeah, and I suppose if there is the, you know, the chance that the commission would want to decide that the plan is in need of update, perhaps we could, we could look to, you know, fund it over, over a couple of cycles. I think we'd be at a point in time where, given the timing of the new fiscal year coming up, we could, we could do it over the course of two as opposed to having to fund it out of one. And it doesn't have to be a 30 or 40 or $50,000 master plan.
Well, the other element of two is, is, you know, to go through the, there are multiple sections in the master plan. It's going to take, we're only meeting four to five times a year.
Right.
Okay? We probably won't even get to the final decision on it until probably January of next year.
Sure.
Okay? In which case then, you know, if the judgment were, that we wanted to do something, we would have time to plan it and organize it and then Eric could take it into the, you know, apply the budget standards to it at that point in time.
Absolutely.
So I think, I think we can, we can work this out.
Sure.
Okay. Also, the other point, you know, we could integrate in the training, you know, the training element of, into the master plan for that matter, is that would be a good education again for everybody.
Yeah.
On exactly what's there.
A third of the basic planning commissioner training is related to master plan process, so...
Yep. So that would be, that would be a good thing that we could do as well. Okay. There's no other points on that. Ann has made a suggestion. She pointed out to me that the zoning board of appeals recently changed their meeting time from 7:30 to 7 o'clock. And she asked the question as to what commissioners would feel about moving the planning commission from 7:30 to 7 o'clock. So I'll throw it out there and see what, what people think. Eric, I'll start with you.
Sure. Same question came up with the township board, whether we wanted to move it ahead. And the general consensus, excuse me, some of the feedback from the community was that having it 7:30 allows them to get home from work at a reasonable time and still, maybe have dinner and still come in and be part of the process if they want to be part of the process. So the feedback from the planning or from the township board was to keep them at 7:30. I'm flexible either way, but, you know, hearing people from the community say that they want to be a part of the process is, to me, is very important and keeping it 7:30, to me, you know, it helps enable that.
Okay. Jim, what do you think?
I'm personally flexible either way. However, you know, I guess I can echo what Eric said. 7:30 seems reasonable if you actually want to get home and then go to a meeting.
Brian, what do you think?
Same goes for me as far as the 7:30, I agree with that and other commissions have been, it's been a general consensus as well. Personally, I really value being able to get home, not have to rush home and then being able to have dinner with my family before coming out to a commission meeting. So I prefer if it stays at then, 7:30.
Okay. Ann?
Either way.
Either way? Okay. Jay?
I think I'd say exactly the same thing that was said at the other end of the table. I'd do seven if that was the consensus, but I'd prefer 7:30 as one of those people who gets home and eats with the family and before coming. And also for audience participation, to the extent we have an issue that brings the audience in, I think it's more convenient, but if the consensus were 7 o'clock, I'd be okay with it.
Okay. Mickey?
I'm flexible either way.
Steve?
7:30 works better for me from my work schedule.
Okay. Yeah, I think 7:30 is, 7:30 is where it needs to stay. Yeah, we asked about it and we talked about it and that's, and that's good, you know, and so we've, we're going to stick with, stick with 7:30. It's a planning commission tradition and I guess we'll just stay there, so. Okay, that leads to the next meeting. Brian, is there anything in the hopper at this point?
There is not, Mr. Chair. Again, the outstanding item that remains would be the McComb Street site plan, but again, without any updates from the architect or the owner, I don't know where that stands at this point in time. I certainly wouldn't, at this point, I guess I wouldn't rush anything given that we did reach out and have not heard back, so I'm guessing it's not of the urgent nature. But I would like to, and certainly want to meet again in the next couple of months if possible so we can stay on top of the ordinance and initiate the master plan discussion.
Okay, well, could I suggest then, we rule out April. There were two in April, two days.[1739.33]